All right, this meeting is called the order. Thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you to those who are joining us, joining us on YouTube. This is Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. We are holding our council meeting at the Cache County Historic Courthouse. And welcome to everyone. For those who are coming in, come on in. And if you'd please sign the register, the roll there as you come in. All right, very good. All right, we will go ahead and get going. Our opening will be from Councilman Paul Borup, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, I figured I'm gonna have a little bit longer one than normal, but I wanted to start out with a question. How much is a trillion? Because we're seeing a lot of money flow into the economy. And, but how much is a trillion dollars? Have you ever thought about that? Because everybody can conceive of what a million dollars is. But here's how much a trillion dollars is. If you started spending $1 million a day, not a week, not a month, not a year, a million dollars a day. If you started spending $1 million a day 778 years before Christ was born, you would have spent a trillion dollars this time, this year. 2,800 years at $1 million a day is a trillion dollars. That's a lot, that's a lot. Thomas Jefferson said, "There does not exist an engine so corruptive of the government and so demoralizing of the nation as public debt. It will bring on us more ruin at home than all the enemies from abroad." I mean, $30 trillion is what our national debt is right now. At $1 million a day, that's 84,000 years. That's longer than recorded history. Even cavemen drawn on caves, longer than that, $1 million a day. This body can't do anything about what Washington DC spends, but we can watch carefully what we spend here. And I'll leave you with the words of Frederick Bastiat. Pardon my French, I'm from Augusta, Georgia. It doesn't work real well. "When the people are encouraged to turn to government to settle all their problems for them, the basis of all revolutions is thereby established. For them, the people expect the government to provide them with all the material things they want. And when these things are not forthcoming, they resort to violence to get them. And why not? Since the government itself has told them that these responsibilities belong to the government rather than to them. Let's not spend money that we don't have on things that we don't need. Our wants will never be satisfied, but our needs can." And then I'm just gonna finish my remarks in the form of a prayer.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this evening, we are grateful for the many blessings that we have. We're grateful for this beautiful valley and for this land that we live in. We're grateful for the wisdom of our founding fathers and for the government that they set up. We're grateful for our fellow citizens and the kindness that they impart to each other. We ask thee to please bless us that we can have the wisdom to make decisions that would keep our valley peaceful and a great place to live. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
And if you'd stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate that. All right, have the council members had a chance to review the agenda?
May I approve the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to amend the agenda and move 5A down into Section 12. On the business.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move 5A down to where, Dave? I'm sorry.
12.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
May I make another motion to move up 11A and B? To follow now, it would be, put that before number seven. I think Diane needs to leave, so we need to talk about the tax relief report, and then we can start with the discussion of Cache Resource Center, too. So 11A and B.
Okay, so there's been a motion that we move 11A and B up to under, after items of special interest. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And we will make those changes. Thank you very much. All right, there's been a review. Have you had a chance to review the minutes?
I just have one input on the minutes, and I don't know that it has to change this time, but I would hope that in the future where we take the votes, it still has my name first, and Barb is maybe should be first and not mine, if you would change that.
Okay, and the only thing that I noticed was on the minutes, there's a misspelling of a last name for Michael Shaun Archie. It's B-A-R-T-S-C-H-I.
Got it.
So if you would make that, that'd be great. Any other changes that need to be made?
I move to approve the minutes with the amendments.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the report of our county executive.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a couple items for you this evening. One is the warrant register. I'll pass that down to you, Madam Chair, for your signature.
Thank you.
The, just a comment I was going to at this point introduce or present the Cache County Council and Executive Boards and Committees assignments. Since that's been moved to the end of the agenda, I do have to leave early myself. My son has a concert, so I probably won't be here when we get to that. So just so you know.
All right.
Some of these are my appointments, some of these are council appointments. It's a mix, so all of the ones that are my appointments are, I approve them. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
And then just a couple of other miscellaneous items. The legislature continues. I'm sure, I'm sure we could spend the entire evening talking about various bills that we're working on or concerned about. I just want to mention one of them briefly. HB 181 by Representative Schultz. I was asked to testify in support of that bill. It currently, it's passed out of the House and it's moved on to the Senate, so that's good. It actually passed unanimously out of the House. And the purpose of this bill is to address some of the issues we've been having with our railroad, as far as the railroad crossings go, such as the one on 1400 North here and the one on SR 30. And that legislation would help to shift some of the, some of the decision-making process as far as maintenance goes to UDOT and help to streamline that process. So I'm happy to see that bill moving on to the Senate, and I think it will bring us some relief on those projects. Just want to thank Representative Schultz for running that bill. Another thing I wanted to give an update on. We had a department head meeting yesterday, including elected official department heads, and did some emergency preparedness training. I think it was successful training. I want to thank everybody who helped with that, especially our sheriff's office, emergency manager. One more thing I wanted to mention, and this will be the last thing that I'll mention this evening. We had our point in time count recently. We mentioned it over the last couple of meetings, actually, but I have some final numbers I just wanted to share with you. We, we actually identified a surprising number of homeless people in our community. And I'm gonna break it down to a couple of different categories, but it was about 221 individuals that were identified. And I, I, I think, and I, I would assume that most people would be surprised to hear that we have more than 200 homeless people living in our community. Thankfully, many of them were actually sheltered on that evening when we, when we did the count, because it was a very cold night. And as you know, it's always cold in the winter here in Cache Valley. So just to break down those numbers, we had about 29 that we observed who did not participate in the survey. There were 15 who were observed and participated in surveys and were talked to. There were thankfully that night 106 who were in some kind of emergency shelter, including 29 in our domestic violence shelter and 77 in motels. And then we had 71 of them in transitional housing. So I think it's important for us to know about this need because there are people in our community in great need. And as I mentioned earlier, can you imagine sleeping outside in Cache Valley in the wintertime? Some of the cars that we went to, not only did they have frost on the outside of the window, there was frost on the inside of the window. If you can imagine how cold that must have been inside those cars. Most of the time when people are unsheltered, living homeless in Cache Valley in the wintertime, they're, they're in vehicles. We, we did have some extra funding available this year to put people up in hotels, which is nice for that time of year. And who I really want to thank are the nonprofit organizations and the churches who step up to help with that process. Because unfortunately, there's, there's not enough funding out there from any of those sources, from the private side or the public side, to be able to shelter everybody who needs it, as, as you can see by the number of unsheltered homeless. So I just want to thank them for stepping up, for helping and for helping them, for them helping to take care of the people in our community who are in great need. And that concludes my report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, county executive. Appreciate that report. All right, we have no items of special interest. We've moved 11A and B up under that. Is Diana here yet? Well, guess not.
Yeah.
Yeah. She wanted that moved up so that she could get to a class that she wanted to, that she signed up for. All right, we'll go to the discussion of the Cache Resource Center. Because of Executive Zook's time that he needs to leave, I've asked him to please address this first, and then we'll go from there. So Executive?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this important project. As, just as background, I'd like to give some background about a couple of other things. One is the Northern Utah Chamber Coalition. And just for those who aren't familiar with it, the Northern Utah Chamber Coalition is a coalition of chambers of commerce north of Salt Lake City. And that is a group that has worked together for some time to advocate to the legislature during the session and in between sessions about needs of their respective communities. It's been a very successful group, actually, because if everybody bands together, then they have about as many legislators as Salt Lake County does or as Utah County does, which, which gives us a little bit of sway, having enough numbers to be able to hold our ground and stand our own when going up against some of those larger counties and communities. So historically, the Northern Utah Chamber Coalition has focused on needs related to businesses, because they're a chamber group, such as transportation, economic development, education. And they've been quite successful in recent years in advocating for and securing legislation and funding for a variety of projects. This past year, the, some of the legislators reached out to that group because they're familiar with it, because they like the way it works and the way that the group prioritizes projects within the region. They reached out to NUC, is how it's referred to in short. The Northern Utah Chamber Coalition is referred to as NUC. They reached out to NUC and said, "Could you help us this year prioritize some social services priorities and help us to know what the greatest needs are in your community?" And the reason they did this is because they were, they were pleased with the way the Chamber Coalition had handled other priority areas. So NUC, NUC agreed to do that. And then probably the middle of last year, maybe it was around June, the Chamber of Commerce and a representative of NUC reached out to me and asked me for some input about what some of our needs were in our community. And it's actually kind of a hard question to answer, and that's what I told them at the time. I said, "We, we have so many needs from housing to domestic violence, victims of crime, senior citizen services, children's services, mental health, substance abuse, services for disabled, refugees, homeless, as I was just talking about earlier, people struggling with intergenerational poverty. There are so many needs out in our community, and we could go on and on." So one of the things that was determined in that early meeting was maybe we need to reach out to the people who are on the front lines of these, of these services and helping people in need. So my suggestion to them was that they, that they host some meetings and invite people in. So they did that. There, I think there were probably around half a dozen meetings in total, some of them smaller, some of them larger, where they brought in representatives from nonprofit organizations, from government agencies, from the education sector, faith-based groups, churches, and, and asked them about needs. And again, there were a multiplicity of needs that were identified. And after significant consideration, discussion, and all of those meetings, the chamber, the chamber decided to focus on a particular need, and that need was a resource center. They decided to focus on that need, and there were a couple reasons why they decided to focus on that need. One was they found it a difficult position to be placed in to pick winners and losers. There were many nonprofits who had worthwhile causes and needs. And it, it was, it was a difficult position for them to be in to say, "Okay, we're gonna advocate for yours, but not yours." And so they decided that they would focus on this resource center because they felt like it was something that would serve many people in need as, as well as many nonprofit organizations. And of course, not everybody agreed with that. There, there were a number of nonprofits, as I mentioned, who had their own priorities, who were, who were preferring to, to focus or prioritize their own needs. And, and not every nonprofit in the valley was, was included in those discussions. Many were, but I think there are dozens and dozens, maybe even hundreds of them in the community, and not all of them were included in that process, but many were. So some of the other reasons the chamber decided to focus on this resource center was because it, it solved or addressed many of the needs that were discussed by the various nonprofits and other agencies. And it was an opportunity to co-locate services in one location. And that's essentially what the discussion was, as far as what the resource center would be. The discussion about what it would be would be one location that would house either a representative, potentially more than one representative from various agencies, nonprofit organizations, faith-based groups, educational organizations. And maybe not even a person, but at least resources and information, brochures, applications, things like that. And if somebody wasn't physically there, there would be, the people who were there would be trained on, on how to help people access, access those resources. So the co-location of services would lead to improved efficiency, collaboration of the agencies, coordinated service delivery, addressing some of the challenges that often face the clients. The people who work in these fields have identified that many of their clients are the shared, are shared clients. They, they take advantage of more than one of the services or have needs in more than one of the service areas, and often have transportation challenges, childcare challenges, or confusion about accessing the multiple programs, dealing with the bureaucracy, red tape, applications, et cetera. So having, having the coordination of services like this could be helpful in helping people in need to access those services. So in discussing that, there were several potential locations that were identified and considered, including vacant retail space, old churches, government buildings, or even constructing a purpose-built new building. And as, as this, as this process continued over the past probably seven, eight months as this discussion's been happening, the, the NUC process continued as well as far as the prioritization. And our chamber went to the NUC meeting. I don't think I made it to any of those initial NUC meetings, but this idea was presented to the Northern Utah Chamber Group and, and received a significant amount of support from the group, as well as the legislators who were there, who liked the idea of the efficiency and improved services. The group actually liked it so much that Box Elder County decided to make it their number one priority to, to build their own resource center, and, and so did, so did Weber County. So those two communities liked, liked our idea, decided to continue down the same path. And they also saw that the legislators really liked and supported the idea. So based on that, the Northern Utah Chamber Coalition then prioritized the projects. And the Box Elder County Resource Center was prioritized as the first social service priority for NUC. Ours was prioritized as the second priority. I believe Davis was, was third, not Davis, Weber County was third. And, and then beyond that, my, my experience in previous years, and this has been a few years, when I was involved in the NUC process, was that something got put on the list, the list got handed to the legislators, and then the legislators determined if they were gonna run a bill or, or put some money in a budget to help with those needs. This year turned out to be a little bit different, and maybe it happened this way in the past and I just wasn't involved, but a couple of weeks ago, after, after a NUC meeting, we, we were told that if, if our request from our county, from our, our chamber was going to be considered, that we needed to fill out what's called an RFA, or a request for appropriation. So we were told on Wednesday that we had to do this and that I had to be in by, by noon that Friday. So we had about two days to fill this form out. Shaun and I volunteered to help with that. Actually, Shaun is the one who volunteered to do it and to help with that. Shaun Milner, Economic Development Director, because he had actually done that before and was a little bit familiar with this form. So we had a couple of rushed meetings over the next 24 to 48 hours, trying to figure out what to put in here, what to put in the application, and got it in by the, by the deadline. Part of what needed to be done was finding a house sponsor, somebody to sponsor that. So Representative Johnson agreed to sponsor that RFA. And one of the things that Representative Johnson said was, "You're gonna have to have some skin in the game. You're gonna have to have some kind of a match to that." So in thinking about that, we, we weren't sure what, what percent match we should put in there, and just kind of arbitrarily picked a 10% match to put in there. We, we, I think we did have some discussion at that point about where that match would come from and, and how we would come up with that match. There was discussion about potentially coming to this body and asking for ARFA money, potentially requesting private donations, raising money, seeking maybe other state or federal dollars. But how that match would be come up with wasn't really determined. So the application was turned in by that, that Friday, which was not, not this Friday, that just passed, but the Friday before. And, and it was turned in by noon. Later that day, I had a conversation, a phone conversation with Representative Johnson, and we talked about the fact that it was kind of a rushed job. We didn't really have all our ducks in a row yet, and that maybe we needed to consider pulling back the application and taking another run at it next year. Considering that legislative session happens once a year, I think everybody felt like, "Oh, this is our one chance. We should, we should take it if it sounds like there's, there's a chance to get this project done." But in talking to Representative Johnson that, that day of that deadline, he and I both acknowledged that it was a bit of a rush, and maybe, maybe it would have been wiser to pull back and, and do some more planning, firm up where the, where the match might come from, where the location might be, who the partners might be. There were a lot of unanswered questions still. Like on that Friday, that it wasn't my project. I couldn't make the call on whether or not to pull it back, but that I would follow up with the, the rest of the chamber group the following week and then follow up with him. So we, we had those discussions. We talked about maybe some ways to pivot the project, do something differently. Because another thing that I actually felt concerned about was the amount of money that was requested. It was a $10 million request, and, and 10% of that would have been $1 million. And raising that much money in that short period of time, well, we would have time to implement it, potentially a couple of years, but I, I felt a little unsure of that. And I, I felt like maybe we needed to reconsider. So after having some discussions with the other people involved at the chamber, we, we had a discussion. Shaun and I actually had a, a conference call with Representative Johnson on Wednesday and told him that we felt like we needed to pull the project. It was scheduled to actually go before committee Thursday morning. So based on that, he, he did end up pulling it the next day from the committee. And we decided that we would, we would take it back to the group and look at some, look at some different ways to approach this. I also, on that Monday following the application, realized that we'd gotten a little ahead of ourselves in the excitement and the rush to get this application done, that in, in putting that we were gonna have a match there and that one of the potential sources for that match might be money from, from this council. I felt pretty uncomfortable at that point that we had even considered that or put that on the application, and that I needed to, to bring it to this body. And so Shaun and I, between us, reached out to a few of you and talked to you about, about the project and the application. I, I asked Madam Chair to put this on the agenda for today so that I could explain it. And, and we, we decided that we, we needed to look at different approaches to this project and, and really take our time and, and do it right. So, so the current, the current plan is, is, is actually not to pursue a new building or a purchased building, but to look for an opportunity. And we, and we have actually identified an opportunity to partner with an existing organization and to use existing space that they have, and potentially do this for little to no money, little to no extra money. And I think that's a good approach. And I actually really enjoy this process because there's been pushback at several points in this process. And I think it's, it's improved the process, and it's improved what I think will ultimately be the outcome of this. And having, having that pushback and having that pressure from, from, from different directions, whether it's the council or other nonprofits, I think has helped us to, to get a better outcome. I, I think it's evidence that the, that the, the system works and the process works. So the, the current proposal, like I mentioned, is to partner with an existing organization, use their existing space, and have, have nonprofits and other agencies in that space and approach it from that perspective, which, which, like I mentioned, could be done for little to no cost. I, I think it's been kind of exciting going through this process. It's been a fun process to, to, to be able to get involved and, and help out with, help out with people in need. I, I do feel like maybe I've gotten a little overzealous about, about this process and my desire to help the weakest among us, but I am passionate about helping those in our community who are in need. And, and I believe it's our responsibility as, as leaders in our community to, to take care of the widows, the children, the single moms, the elderly, the victims of crime, disabled, the sick and afflicted. I think that's our responsibility. However, I really like this, this project and this approach because as, as Councilman Borup mentioned earlier, I think the government should be the last resort when, when we, when we look for help and when we look for ways to help people in need. I love that this was being led by the Chamber of Commerce. This was being led by business leaders. This was being led by people in our community. And just like I mentioned on the, the homeless issue earlier, I think that's the ideal approach, where we had some organizations like churches, like nonprofits, stepping up to help people in need. And, and then what they weren't able to help, then the government provided some assistance. So that's, that's my report on, on that project. I appreciate the interest that there has been in the community and from the council on this project. And I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for taking, taking the lead on this project and for allowing me to help them out with this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Well, I know we've got a public hearing coming up, but I just want to make sure I understand. You feel like what you just said for the last 20 minutes was an accurate portrayal of reality?
Yes.
Okay.
John, can I get your help? We have, we're supposed to go to a public hearing. Can we continue this discussion after the public hearings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to take a minute, a couple minutes out and go with the public hearings. We have reset a public hearing for February 22nd, 2022. Resolution, Resolution 2022-03. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-three. A resolution declaring the, declaring the county's interest in the real property located in Lewiston, Utah, described as the portion of tax identification parcel number fourteen dash zero-two-nine dash zero-zero-one-eight that is north of two thousand South Street in Lewiston as surplus property and approving the disposition thereof.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Okay, it has been moved that we reset a public hearing for February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash three. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very.
Second, second to that?
Yeah, Carl.
Carl?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, very good. All right, item B, set public hearing for February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-four. A resolution approving the appointment of a representative to the Cache Water District Board of Trustees.
So move.
So move, second, anybody?
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Um, it's been moved and seconded that we set a public hearing for February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-four. A resolution approving the appointment of a representative to the Cache Water District Board of Trustees. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good, that concludes our public here, our setting of the public hearings. All right, we will now return back to the Cache Resource Center discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to give some input on that.
Okay.
And some questions. Uh, I'd also like to say, and perhaps maybe the executive asked this to be on the agenda, but I asked for it to be on the agenda Monday. Um, I've caught wind of this, um, the Thursday before, and still had not heard anything from it, none of us knew anything about this. And so I asked for it to be put on the agenda. I called Representative Johnson to find out what was going on with it. I let him know the council knew nothing about it. He said, holy smokes. So he knew that there was an issue at that point, and I had a discussion with him about this. Um, it's been said that this is a chamber project, and I guess my question would be, why is it county-owned? And why is the county need to put money into it? If it's a chamber deal, then the chamber should own it. And my point in that is that this has been discussed apparently for some time, and it needs, it needed to come to the county council. Um, when I talked to Dan, he wasn't going to pull it. Um, what happened is, um, after talking to three other colleagues on the council, uh, since I was in Salt Lake anyway, and I had written an email to those of the committee that I am familiar with, I wasn't sure they would get that email in time because it was an eight AM appropriations committee meeting. I went in and I testified to that committee that this had not been approved by the county council, either the policy direction, or the match, or the funding, and that many of the nonprofits, from what we understood, were not in favor, and that I, I spoke on my behalf, and then I did add that three other council members joined me in asking for this funding appropriation to be pulled. At that point, I stepped out, Representative Johnson came to me, he was concerned and he was disappointed that there wasn't anything really that he could salvage, but he said, I'm going to pull the request, and went in to the chair and pulled the request. So, uh, I, I have a little bit of different, uh, ideas there of what happened, a different version of, of what happened. Not sure how those mesh together, but this is a council decision, it is in code, and it's pretty well-known that it's up to the council to approve funding and policy, and that didn't happen, and there was ample opportunity to do so because this had been talked about apparently for eight months, and even though maybe the funding request suddenly had to be done, nevertheless, this idea has been floated out there, and it needed to come to council. And so I would like to ask the executive what process he's going to use in the future, um, to come to council ahead of time to make sure that he has the necessary backing before he goes to the legislature and creates a difficult situation for Representative Johnson and for council members.
And before he answers that, I'd like him to answer why the discrepancy between your story and what he just told us, when he said he was sure that what he said was an accurate representation of reality.
Oh, I need to add one thing. Those two documents that are on our server, on our iPads about this, the first one I got from Dan Johnson, the second one I got from, uh, a nonprofit who was concerned, neither of them came from the county executive. You haven't given us any information about this, I have to go find it on my own.
Well, thanks for asking for information, uh, and I, I guess I'll start by saying that if, if, if you ever have questions, please feel free to call me, I'm happy to speak. Uh, some of the council members did reach out to me and I explained the process and, and where we were. Uh, there were a couple of questions that you, uh, mentioned, Councilmember Worthing, that I wrote down, so let me just go through them. Why county-owned was, was one of them. Uh, that was, I guess, kind of a, a last-minute decision, uh, when we filled out the application. Part of the thought process with that was that we felt like it would have, uh, better chance of success being, uh, being requested by a government agency, or that the money would be handed to a government agency. It seems like the legislature prefers to, uh, to allocate funds to government, to government. Uh, I think they feel more comfortable in having it managed that way. Uh, there was discussion about maybe going through, uh, a foundation, maybe even our foundation, the United Way, a couple of different things, but, uh, yeah, that, that was, uh, that was one of the things that gave me concern about this, was the fact that, that that had not been approved, that we, that you, uh, you as a council had not said that you'd be willing to accept those funds, uh, if they were willing to give it. So that was one of the reasons, uh, that I felt like we needed to withdraw it. It was, it was discussed for some time, as you mentioned, over, over the year. However, the way, the way that it was going to be structured, uh, was never really known, there were, there were a lot of, uh, a lot of ideas thrown out over that time period. And I did request at one point, or maybe a couple of points, um, at our budget committee, that, that we bring the ARPA, uh, discussion to the council, and it was part of the ARPA discussion, we did discuss this at the budget committee, uh, and, uh, Councilmember Worthing, you and I actually discussed it at one of the budget committee meetings, and you told me at that time that you had heard that not all of the nonprofits were okay with it.
It was so brief, it was just a harebrained idea at that point, so we can't really say we discussed it.
Yeah.
There was no details, and all I had heard was, there's a county resource center, and I had heard that the nonprofits weren't in favor of it, and that was the entire discussion. So we were, it really wasn't discussed and no notice was actually given. We didn't talk about money or who owned it.
We're going to put that request, we're going to put that request up on the screen here, that says, "We believe that a coordinated shared response," and that's on county letterhead. Who is "we"? Mr. Zook? When it comes up there, who is "we"?
Uh, I, I believe the, uh...
At the county level, who is "we"?
I believe the reference to "we" is, uh, the county, the chamber, all the partners.
The county, who would the, who would the county specifically? We're, this is on county letterhead, committing a significant amount of money to this project, and it says "we" on county letterhead. I'd like to know who "we" is.
The county.
The county, who is "we" in the county? Because the county is people, the county is not a person, the county is people. Who is "we" in the county that says "we believe that this is a project that, that Representative Johnson..." It is the first sentence in paragraph number two.
We, when...
Who's "we"?
When we were saying "we," we were referring to those of us who were involved with the project.
Who was involved in the project? Who was involved in committing, at this point, one million dollars and taking a parcel of land that's one of the most valuable taxable parcels in this valley off of the tax rolls? Who is "we"?
"We" was those of us involved.
Who was, who was those of us that were involved? I need to list them, because it's this body right here that votes on that. Who on, is who at this dais right here was that "we"?
None of you were involved.
None of us were. You wanted to commit two percent of our budget on just the down payment on this project and use the word "we." And you just said, "None of us were involved in committing that amount of money." That amount of taxpayer money.
Which is why I pulled it back.
Did you pull it back, or did Gina pull it back?
Dan didn't pull it until I went and testified, so you can't say that, I don't believe that that's accurate.
Dan and I had a conversation the very day...
It was still on the agenda when he was pushing it.
Let him answer.
I was, I was under the impression it had been pulled. Sean and I had a conference call, you're welcome to call Sean up and ask him. Sean and I had a conference call with Representative Johnson the day before, when we, uh, I was told it was going to go before the committee. Sean and I called him, uh, had a conference call, told him we were concerned, we needed to pull it. The morning of, I talked to Representative Johnson, um, well, that afternoon also, uh, Sean checked the agenda, told me that it had been pulled and that it was no longer on the agenda. He realized the next morning that that was an error, and that he hadn't looked far enough down the agenda and that it was still there, but he and I were under the impression that it had been pulled off the agenda. I actually was at the legislature the next morning, I happened to be there, uh, uh, for other business, and because, um, one of the nonprofits who was on the agenda for another item had told me about their request, I decided to go in support of their request, and so I happened to be at that meeting and, uh, talked to Representative Johnson, and that is the point that I found out that it was still on the agenda, and asked him again, uh, if it could be pulled, if it was too late, what the process would be. But it was my understanding at that point and since the previous day that it was going to be pulled and that it, in fact, was already off the agenda, even though that, that was an error.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand this right, because boy, I'm a slow learner. Before the meeting started, you talked to Representative Johnson and said you needed that part pulled, and yet during the meeting Gina talked to him and asked him to pull it, and he totally forgot about the conversation that he had with you just prior to that meeting starting. Is that what you just told me?
You'll have to ask Representative Johnson what his understanding was. All I can tell you is what my understanding was. My understanding was that the day before, Sean and I talked to him and that it was going to be pulled. I talked to him the Friday before, and he and I both agreed that it should be pulled. I talked to him again the Monday, that Monday, uh, about that. Uh, I told him I had to talk to the rest of the group, and so I wasn't able to, on the Friday or the Monday, to tell him, yeah, pull it. That message didn't get to him till Wednesday. It sounds like that was too late, and it sounds like, uh, maybe there was some miscommunication between us. There was also some discussion about potentially pivoting, doing something different with it, uh, but it was always the discussion that we were going to withdraw that request for those funds, uh, and the commitment for the match.
I'm still pretty slow here. Um, you talked to Representative Johnson, you said Friday, and said that you were going to talk to other people. That includes, this is the other people. Anybody get a call?
No.
Yes.
No, you so, you told, you, so you're telling me you told Representative Johnson you were going to pull it till you talked to us, then you proceeded not to talk to us, then you proceeded to tell Representative Johnson to pull it again, and yet all that time, he didn't ever get that message. That's what you just told me here, in public today. You going with that?
I told you exactly what happened.
When I talked to Representative Johnson, I asked him if he could pull this, he said he could. He never indicated that anybody else had asked him or that he would pull it, so I let him, I asked him, I said, I'm going to ask this be on the council meeting because this needs council approval, is it okay if I, we do it for next Tuesday, is that too late? He thought that would be okay. Obviously, it had ended up on the agenda, but, um, yeah, I, I don't see that at that point on Monday, he was going to pull it, uh, because he didn't give any indication when I asked him. So there's some misunderstanding or something going on.
Sean Millen is here, he was involved in most of those discussions, he can corroborate. If you don't believe me, you can ask him, he was involved in most of those discussions.
Sean, if you'll come up, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sean Millen, Economic Development Director. The, I can't speak to Monday, but Councilman Borup, I can absolutely, without any reservation, tell you that Mr. Zook, Executive Zook, had him on speakerphone, let him know that I was in his office, he was on speakerphone. This was Wednesday afternoon, the day before the committee hearing. He absolutely stated in such a way that I walked away with the impression it was pulled. That was my takeaway. Didn't expect it, but just out of an abundance of caution, I went to my computer and I looked at the agenda and I didn't see it on it. And I audibly said out loud to David, uh, I don't know, within an hour or so of the conclusion of that meeting, "It's not on the agenda, I think we're good." I said that. I own that mistake.
That was the Friday before, when David said he was going to call us to talk about it, nobody got the call between that Friday and that Wednesday then.
Oh, it wasn't, it, it wasn't, it wasn't the council that I decided I needed to reach out to, it was the rest of the chamber group, because Representative Johnson and I had discussed pulling it, and I told him that wasn't my call, I needed to check with the rest of the group to, in order to pull it. It wasn't until Monday afternoon, I think, that I realized that I needed to reach out to this group and tell you guys what had happened, because at that point, I realized, you know, this, this doesn't look great, uh, it, it, there are some commitments that it appears that the county's making, and I recognized that, I, I, I recognized that myself on, on Monday.
It appears? Commitments?
Are there any other commitments of money you made without talking to us that we need to know about at this time?
Not that I'm thinking of right now, but I'll let you know as soon as I realize if there are any.
A million bucks? I mean, I just look at that, a million bucks, hundred and thirty-two thousand people, seventy-five per person, for me, that'd be a hundred percent tax increase. It appears?
Sean.
That the county's making a commitment?
Sean, you, you wrote that, what, what was our, what was our thought process as far as where that money would come from?
Generally speaking, it was going to be a conversation with the council, that much I understood. I can't speak to whether or not there was a robust conversation, okay? I can't weigh in on that. I do know that on Monday, I was asked by Executive Zook if I would reach out specifically to Councilwoman, uh, Worthing, and I did. I, again, cannot speak to who else he may have spoken to, but I specifically remember him noting to, that he said he had spoken to by sometime end of day Monday. As to the money, it could either be coming from this body and/or a match, like a capital campaign, like any higher-ed institution would do, and/or nonprofits might contribute to it. Uh, Jay, who is the intern of Representative Dan Johnson, knew as much as we turned in the final draft. Uh, he and I sat down and worked on what became the final draft of the RFA, uh, that was due by Friday at noon of that week.
Why wasn't that RFA sent to council? That's a question I have. I think we're getting, we get into the weeds of who said what when, I think we're still missing the big picture, which is the council knew nothing about this, and I, I respect the chamber, I think they do a lot of good for us, but your commitment is to the county, not to the chamber. And this is going to be a county-owned building, it's a policy change, it's a, it's a different thing, and this council needed to be consulted. I don't, I still don't understand why that didn't happen as this was going along at any point.
So, perfect. Who authorized one million dollars with the name Cache County next to it in the Request for Appropriation? Number one?
I did.
You did. So you authorized, you, David Zook, by yourself, said Cache County was on the hook for a million.
No, not Cache County, I said that we...
Oh, plus private non, so it may not be a million. But who put the, who put the picture of the Macy's building right there indicating that that might be the place, a parcel of land that the Cache County citizens receive fifty-two thou, fifty-three thousand dollars a year on? What's the net present value of fifty-three thousand dollars per year going forward? How much money is that that you just put, committed the people of Cache County to by yourself?
There were a number of potential locations that were...
But that's the picture that you put on there, not a number, but that's the picture you put on there. Fifty-three thousand dollars a year in tax revenue.
Which is part of the reason...
What's the net present value of that?
That's part of the reason why I felt like, uh, it, it needed additional thought and why we did pull it back, is because that wasn't the best location. We, we've looked at some other locations that I think would be a better approach. This was...
So how come that picture got on there?
I, that's one of the locations that we've been talking about. It's, it's, it was an op, an option, those were options, there were several options mentioned there.
So just so we're clear, David Zook, by himself, without any other person within the government of Cache County, goes to the state and says, hey, Cache County's in for one million, oh, but there'll be some private nonprofit, and oh, by the way, we're going to take one of the most valuable parcels of land off of our tax roll too. By yourself, without anybody else.
Yeah, and that's what I realized on Monday.
Yeah, the continuing fund... Yeah, the continuing funding.
That's what I realized after the two days of rush to do that on Monday. That's why I realized on Monday, well, even Friday, the day it was turned in, that we needed to pull it back.
Okay, I will say that, okay. I will say that on Tuesday, when I came in for agenda planning, he, I wasn't involved in any of this other than the fact that he told me that this had been presented, but it had been pulled because he realized that he had made a statement that was not, you know, in accordance to what we as a council should do. So I took it that it had been pulled and end of discussion.
And let's be really clear. It was pulled because Councilman Worthing had it pulled. Mr. Zook thought it had been pulled, possibly, but it wasn't pulled until Gina got involved.
That didn't happen until, that didn't happen until the following Thursday.
I have a text from Representative Johnson.
This is, this is a discussion.
Well, it, that didn't happen until the following Thursday when Representative, or Councilmember Worthing made her comments. But yeah, I, so I did speak with Madam Chair about it. I asked her to put it on the agenda. I gave her feedback about it. And I was reached out to by Councilmember Ward about it on that Monday. And I did have an opportunity to talk to him through text and then later in person. So I, I spoke with three. Gina indirectly through Sean, I asked him to reach out to her and then Madam Chair and then Councilmember Ward. I, I felt like three was enough. I didn't want to break the Open and Public Meetings Act and talk to everybody about something. I felt like three was good and then asked Madam Chair to put it on the agenda so that I could speak to everybody in public form about it.
Attorney. If the count, if the executive speaks to each one of us individually on the same subject, but he does it individually, does that break the Open and Public Meetings Act, the training that we had two weeks ago?
I don't, as long as it's informational-
Correct.
And doesn't move on into back facilitating a discussion through email. So it, it would depend on where it went, but an information-
But if he just wanted to inform us like he informed Barbara and Carl, that would not break the Open and Public Meetings Act.
If it's just informing.
Okay.
That's good to know. In the future, I'll call all of you and I hope you'll answer my call.
Any more discussion?
Well, I think one of the things I'm seeing here is something had to happen so immediately that we forgot a whole bunch of stuff that needed to be laid down as groundwork. And as a result, we get ourselves in a situation that's not very pleasant. So hopefully we, speaking of us as executives, learned our lesson and we have to remember that we are the ones that have to decide if a project's good and if we're going to put money on it. As long as we do that, we should be able to move forward.
I, I think this dead horse has been beaten to death.
Yeah, we've, we've kicked this way too long. A mistake is made and we'll proceed. It might be hard to resurrect this, this project in the future, but we got kind of a sour taste in our mouth. But it looks to me like that it's a project that's maybe worthy and has potential, but I don't know anything about it.
But it does bring up a point. What dictates an emergency is, you would almost think that something like this would need discussed in council rather than one at a time so that we all air our opinions, knowledge, education, and everything else about it so that this does not push forward and then we're like, oh crud. So as Gordon said, there's, there's time that an emergency comes, but I think the emergency has to be defined as an emergency. That's my point. So-
Thank you.
I don't know how the rest, yeah.
Anyone else have any additional?
I understand these, these kind of facilities, they do exist. I understand they exist in California. And it may sound like a good idea, but that's a failing state if you ask me. So I think we would want to vet it and do it Cash County's way, not California's way. But we also need to talk. We need to know these things upfront in the beginning, get behind it, and we all work together for the same jobs.
I do have another question. I know, and I just want to say, I know that there are nonprofits that felt left out. They were not part of this discussion. Nevertheless, the services they offer are up on that chart as though they did support it. So that confuses me a little bit. And I understand there's a meeting February 14th with the nonprofits and some of them have caught wind of that, but they're not invited. David, can you tell us about what that is at the senior center?
I don't know what that meeting is.
That was my understanding that you were the one that did the inviting. Perhaps maybe that was incorrect information, but-
I'm going to check my calendar. I'm not aware of that meeting.
Madam Chair, I suggest that we move on and-
And one, well, one other thing I'd say before we-
Nothing that's going to be accomplished because there's no motions and there's no nothing and it's been withdrawn and how it got withdrawn, of course, that isn't going to matter. It's withdrawn.
I see a, a meeting on my calendar that's hosted by the United Way on that day. I, I've been invited to it, but I didn't organize it.
Thanks for-
So if I could just say one more thing, I apologize. I definitely have learned from this process. Was I overzealous in doing this? Did I, should I have done things differently? Absolutely. And, and I want you to know, I, I recognize that very early in the process and that's why I took steps to correct it. I, I recognize this should have been done differently and I apologize for that. It is not my intent to usurp your authority. I, I respect the authority of our legislative branch, your budget authority and legislative authority. And I, I want you to know that that was never my intent. And as soon as I realized that it could be perceived that day or that way, I realized that we needed to pull back and I started doing that. So I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Executive. Thank you to all the council members.
Just one other thing, if we start to spend money, just remember, we got a capital improvement plan that we got last year. That's $19 million worth of stuff we have to pay for before we build a new building.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's input. Thank you, Sean. All right, let's move on. Diana still isn't here, so I guess we're going to have to, if she isn't here by the end of meeting, then we'll need to save that till the next.
Or pull it without her. I don't think she's going to be here.
Yeah, or, yeah, that's, okay. All right, let's go down to initial proposals for consideration of action. I'm sorry. 7A, I'm sorry, Lauren. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm here. No worries.
Okay, here we are. All right. Thank you, Lauren. We will now turn the time over to the general plan update to Lauren Ryan, our countywide planner, and thank you for being here.
Uh, I believe so, yeah. Thanks so much, council members. Quick update on the general plan. I was not here, oops, not that button, last month. And so Happy New Year. I actually got the date right on it. I've been putting 2021 on everything still, so I'm glad I put 2022 on there. And I, I listened to last council meeting and heard, I think in every council member's mouth, that the general plan was one of their goals to achieve. And I want to know that I heard you and it is definitely one of my goals as well to, to get this project wrapped up. So I know I've, I've gone over this before, but I kind of just wanted to show you where we started and, and all the progress we have made so far on the, on the general plan project. The project from, was kicked off in, in 2020, which was a, a difficult time to begin this process with COVID happening and, and trying to do any in-person events or anything. And so from August to October of 2020 was our kickoff events. We held a number of stakeholder meetings, did outreach at the county fair and also held open houses. From those events, we produced a visioning outreach summary, which was a culmination of, of a questionnaire that we put out to the public along with a visual preference survey and also had an interactive mapping tool, an idea wall. We also did a general plan audit report. That was a look at our, our general plan that was done 20-plus years ago and saw, saw the updates that we needed to do there. In the spring of 2021, we wrapped up our existing conditions and policy gap report, which provided an overview and analysis of baseline conditions for all the plan elements going forward. Last summer, we held community and choices and priority events. From that process, we had our vision and guiding principles document that really helped to align where we went with our, with our general plan from feedback from the public. And we also held a, a focus group workshop as well with stakeholders. And last fall, we held that online survey with our, with our policy and strategies that, that we had built from those visioning and guiding principles. And hosted that online survey, which we had over 1,000 participants. And that brings us to this past winter and spring where we are in full drafting phase right now of our cost of services plan, urban and rural area assessment, regional collaboration plan, and the general plan. So it's a mouthful and we are working hard on, on getting those drafts to you. Hopefully, in the next month or two, we'll actually have a draft to be reviewing. We had a steering committee yesterday that went over the cost of services plan and the urban and rural area assessment and gave them direction on, on where we were headed with that and that went really well. And so that's where we're at right now, drafting phase of everything. So thank you all for your patience in this project. It's been COVID start, different principles coming in in the consulting world. Taylor left and I came in, so it's just been a long process, but, but we're getting there. I also want to point out too that the project site has been dissolved and I've moved everything over to the development services website so folks can find information there. Working on everything, getting to that page. And something unrelated to the general plan, but important, I want to plug. I saw some of you had signed up for the, the seminar tomorrow at the event center that the Utah Land Use Institute is hosting. There's a training from an afternoon, 1:30 to 4:00, and then 6:00 to 9:00 tomorrow. So if you haven't had a chance to sign up, it's going to be a really, really great discussion and, and seminar for, for folks, so.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for Lauren? Any comments?
I just want to say thanks for all your work on this and-
Yeah, thanks for bearing with us through the process, so appreciate it.
Great. Good process. Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. All right, did I forget anybody else here? All right, let's move on to 11C. Discussion, designation of what constitutes a significant parcel of real property and reasonable notice for purposes of the surplus and disposition of real property. And we have Mr. Luthy to give us some information on that.
This is part of the ongoing update, the county code endeavor that we're doing and where am I not?
So we'll have the rest done next time.
The reason, the reason I'm bringing this for discussion is it kind of tied into the, the hearing that we've reset for your next meeting about a parcel of property that the county owns that's in Lewiston City. That there's discussion about recommending to you to surplus a part of that parcel or perhaps grant an easement over it instead. As we looked at the noticing of the public hearing and that sort of thing, just discovered some issues that ought to be addressed by the council. This is the state code regarding acquisition, management, and disposal of property. I'm going to come down here to subsection five. Try to put that in the middle of the screen there. Before a county may dispose of a significant parcel of real property, the county shall provide reasonable notice of the proposed disposition at least 14 days before, before the opportunity for public comment and allow an opportunity for public comment on the proposed disposition. Each, and here's the key part, each county shall by ordinance define what constitutes a significant parcel of real property for purposes of subsection 5A and what constitutes reasonable notice for purposes of subsection 5A. So we, since I've been at the county, we've come to you to surplus a couple of parcels. Since we don't have a county ordinance that says what a significant parcel is, we've come to you in any event. I think, given the parcel that we're looking at now, the size and that sort of thing, depending on what you were to decide, it could be a significant parcel. It could not be. But we need an ordinance that would define what a significant parcel of real property is. And then you're to hold a hearing, or yeah, a public hearing before surplusing real property. And the public is to get reasonable notice of that hearing. And we don't know what reasonable notice is. You're to define that by code. So I don't have an ordinance for you, but thought it might be nice to begin to hear from you about what a significant parcel of real property is and what reasonable notice is of a two-week hearing. I, I can give you some thoughts on both of those. Just listening to the other part of the discussion that's happened this evening where some real property was potentially to be acquired. If you look at subsection four, same part of the state code, the county legislative body shall provide by ordinance resolution, rule or regulation for the manner in which property shall be acquired. We don't have an ordinance for that either. So that, those are just two additional places where we could use discussion. I, we haven't noticed that subsection four. I'm just noting for you that, that we could use an ordinance from you on that as well. But with that introduction, would be happy to field questions or hear your initial thoughts on what's a significant parcel of real property.
My initial thoughts are, any real property, if we're going to be disposing of real property, real estate, we ought to be involved in that. I, I mean, otherwise, how do you? Earl, you said, if it's worth less than $500,000, then it's not significant? I would disagree. There's hardly anything that's worth less than $500,000 today.
Significant means, you think that means money, monetary value, or does it mean purpose?
I, I equate that as monetary value.
But if you're living next to it or around it or what it's in a community, it could be significant either way.
Or, or the purpose is to why we are disposing, because, you know, no need.
I think that Matt, if he's here, could speak to the types of parcels that we do have out there. There are some parcels where it's in a residential neighborhood and there's a residential lot, a little strip of county property and another residential lot. And if we dispose of things like that, is, is that significant enough to put on your agenda and have a, have a discussion? And it very well may be, but you, you ought to know what kinds of parcels you could be dealing with if-
We'll, we'll hear about it.
Yeah.
If somebody doesn't like it, we'll hear about it.
I'm even thinking of what we did just on the Valley View Highway a little bit ago, right? Didn't we just dispose of almost a right-of-way type thing just along that highway? That really wouldn't have been for much of any use, but I don't know. I think it's probably to Carl's point, right? It's probably a good thing because we've got a little piece of a, close to a bridge out there in Lewiston.
The other thing about that is it might not be so much monetary as it is the public would, the public would like to be able to put input because it might, it might be pretty con- controversial about it being sold.
That's right.
So I almost think anytime that you use any, any property, it should come before the council, and if it is deemed important and we ought to do a public hearing, we ought to do everything out in the open and let the people know and let them have input. And, and I don't, we don't, I've sat here a long time, and we don't dispose of very much property, so it's not that big of a time-consuming thing. I just think we should put it on, discuss it, open the public to put the ins so that we don't miss anything. We might not really know what it's about, but the public probably does. And I think it shouldn't be, I think it should be a pretty narrow, pretty narrow understanding and not a broad brush. You know, you're talking to 500,000, of course, that's being fictitious, but you know, even a small thing, if there's two sides to it, to people, we ought to know about it so that we can try to make a, a good decision.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I noticed that we have in the past several like little slivers that have like were created just because of when they finally got to do some surveys in that area, there, it left just little gaps and things like that, like between two houses and, but the fences, you know, we've disposed of those things just so that they clean up a lot of those mapping and stuff. And, and some of those probably should have never, ever had a parcel number even put on them because of, you know, a little gap between two neighbors. They probably should have just.
You still don't have a parcel number even after selling a great sliver.
I know, but they, but in reality, that, that's the problem with our, our survey system as to where certain, you know, way markers are, are placed. They could be just to, you know, and let, let the people even within them kind of work that between them sometimes. But even at that, that's, we've dealt with some of those. There was like that one-foot strip up in Richmond, I remember. It was like a one-foot strip and it had a parcel number in between two people.
Yeah.
You know? The one says, "I've never used that, it's not mine," you know? So I think there's a lot of that that happens, just indirect effects of what, you know, of what our new technology is in our surveying and everything that's also created, we ought to dispose of those things.
Well, I.
Significance, a good question.
Yeah, that, I'm going to concentrate on significant. Maybe we need to take the word significant out of there and just put parcel of real property or something like that. Is that something that we could do, or you don't agree with that, do you?
Well, significance is something that's important to one person and not another. And so you can't determine through a piece of paper what's significant. It's what means something to me doesn't mean anything to my wife, and the same thing with what means something to someone in the county doesn't mean anything to anyone else. So I think it just needs to be up front and talked about, and the significance will come out in the public hearing and then we can make a decision.
We, we can prepare an ordinance that would define in Cache County that a significant parcel of real property, that, that any parcel of real property owned by the county is deemed to be a significant parcel for purposes of, of surplusing. And I, I know you haven't seen a lot of them, but I, I think Matt ought to maybe get up here before we're done. I think that Matt has a desire to help us move through and resolve some of these random property issues, and if we bring enough of them to you that you say, "We, we don't need to keep hearing about lots like this," maybe then you'd say, "Change the ordinance." But we can go that direction at this point. Do you want to say anything?
Matt, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The one point I just wanted to bring up is these little slivers and things like that, there's a lot of those that deal with the roads. So when considering significant stuff, as annexations take place, a lot of times they're annexing real property and they want to take jurisdiction, they want that land to become part of the city. And so I know that there's some state code and annexation is timeframe, so that might be one thing that could be part of the discussion is these that are truly county right-of-ways or county roads that have parcel numbers that are real property. Maybe there's a way to handle those that's, that's maybe different than, you know, a sliver of property or a parcel that's really land, just so that, that process isn't lengthy. But that's just one thing to consider. Those are a lot of our parcels. Over the years, they've been given tax parcel numbers. When, when cities annex those in, they need to come for the council for permission and sign the petitions and things like that. And we're running into a lot of that as the cities grow and develop and, and spread out that those are a lot of parcels that we're dealing with as well, so.
Any questions for Matt?
Matt, how many, excuse me, of these type properties do you think we have out in the county?
I think it was last year, the GIS department put together a list of all the county parcels that would be of significant, of, you know, land that weren't slivers or, you know, the one across the street from the Festival of the American West that the county owns property there, some of these parcels that are a little, a little bit bigger. But we could probably put a list together of all the, it'd be hard to get all those little road pieces and those dedications or quitclaim deeds, but we can actually, we can, I can have GIS look and see if that needs to be updated and send that to the council if, so you can see the, you know, the majority of the real property. But yeah, there's hundreds of tax parcels on roads and whether, how we became those, there's a few from tax sales, there's the slivers, there's, so as Dave mentioned, a lot of that is cleanup, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Based on Matt's comment, I, I might suggest that you let us draft a, one that would define everything as a significant parcel except, and we'd have to come up with the right language, except real property that is, constitutes a county road that is to be annexed into a municipality, that if you're okay in all those instances, if the road's going into Hyde Park, that Hyde Park take it and maintain it and all of that, and that we don't need to hold up that process by coming to you for a surplusing. That maybe we can include that as a non-significant parcel. The other part is what kind of notice is reasonable when surplusing property? Need to give notice two weeks in advance? What kind of notice is reasonable at this stage in the game? I think Janine's is well-qualified to talk about what standard for noticing these days, but we have the, the state public notice website, and I'd propose that that alone may be reasonable, but, but you could decide whether it ought to go to a media outlet as well or to be published in the paper or whatever. We just need some direction to know what would be reasonable.
What is the, what is the, the date? Does two weeks' notice, is that okay? Or do you have, is there cases that you gotta, you gotta notice it more than two weeks? Two weeks is fine?
And this would only be notice applying to the surplusing of real property. And it, you're required to give for, at least fourteen days.
Okay.
So the timeframe is set for us. We've got to give fourteen days' notice. We've got to give reasonable notice of the proposed disposition, which could be both, does it need to be on the state public notice website? Does it need to go in the, the paper? Do we need to notice adjacent landowners? But we, we need a definition of what's reasonable notice when we're surplusing land.
I don't think you'd want to notice the adjacent landowners, let them know what's going on. Sorry, Dave.
I was just thinking that if you gotta give at least fourteen days, you, we speak about it now, tomorrow's another day, and that doesn't give you fourteen days to our next meeting. So it almost sounds like if we talk about today, it'll be two meetings away before we can actually make a decision. And I don't think you can get around that, so I guess that's the way you should write that ordinance.
I think that's, I think that's what we ought to do.
I'm not sure that I understood.
Well, if we talk about surplus property today and we've got to make a notice of it tomorrow, makes it so that it would only be thirteen days to our next meeting. And so it almost seems like if we discuss it tonight, the quickest that you can discuss it and make a decision on it is two meetings away, next meeting, then the next meeting. And I think.
I believe that if we, I believe that if we talked about it tonight and notice it to, tomorrow, that you would have the, the fourteen required days.
Well, I'm not sure because it hasn't went to the, well, it is in public, it is in public, they can review the minutes of the council, but as far as being in the newspaper, that is not going to make that.
If it, yeah, you wouldn't make the newspaper. If, if it was just the state public notice website, that could be done first thing tomorrow, and then it can be on your agenda for two weeks from now. If we've got to notice the adjacent landowners, then yeah, that, that may be difficult to do the next day.
Well, that gets very expensive to do all that kind of stuff. I think we just notice that, that it's on, it's on public notice and we're going to talk about a parcel number and, and off we go. We can, we can make this last, can't make a decision for a year, and we don't want to do those kind of things. That's being fictitious, but we need to move it as fast as we can, but we still got to give the people a chance to know what's going on.
I'm agreeable with the fourteen days if tomorrow ca, if today were to count as one of those days and then there, I think that's what we would go with. Any other?
That's a part that you don't need to decide. It, it has to be a fourteen-day notice.
Okay.
If we get notice out tomorrow, that meets the fourteen-day requirement. The question is, what does it mean to get notice out? Does that mean get notice to the adjacent landowners? Does it mean put it in the Herald Journal? Does it mean put it on the state website? Or all of the above? And since you don't have an ordinance for the hearing that you've set for two weeks, I think that our intent is to put that on the state public notice website until you give us further direction. And that's kind of why we're here, is to ask for, beyond that, what would the direction be?
There are some of those parcels that literally, if, they would only have ramifications to maybe one or two individuals, because I know I have seen a, like a small sliver of Cache County property sit out in the middle of a hayfield that is maybe a hundred and feet long and ten feet wide. And in my lifetime, my dad's lifetime, all these kind of things, you sit there wondering, "How did that ever happen?" No one ever.
And we'd like to resolve some of those.
But that's to say, you start noticing these, we don't want outside people coming in and start, you know, I think, do we just, do you just notice those people that it affects right there in that area, those property owners around them, or?
You do have to give, I, I think that the state statute about public notice means you've got to do something to give notice to everybody.
Yeah.
And then if you want to additionally require notice specifically to property owners, I think that that issue is better addressed by saying, "What's a significant parcel?"
There you go.
There you go, I appreciate that.
But I think if there is a significant parcel, the adjacent property owners are going to want to know. Not everybody's signed up to the public meeting website, and somehow suddenly somebody's going to start building something there on that property next to them or doing something with it because we sold it and they're going to be, "Whoa, wait a minute." So I, you know, and then they're going to accuse us of backroom deals or they're going to feel, you know, that we weren't on the up and up. And I think that immediately adjacent, those that touch that property, that they should, we should let them know.
You think we're smart enough to see a piece, piece of property and say, "Hey, this is pretty significant." And then another piece of property that says it's significant, but it's not, it's not earthquake-type decision, and I think, I don't know.
That would be great, but state code doesn't allow that. We, we have to define it for every, and not do it on a case-by-case basis.
Bind tune it.
I, I think that we appreciate this input, we'll put something together and bring it back for further discussion.
If you got it close.
Okay. And for the hearing that you've reset for two weeks from tonight, we'll have Janine notice that on the state public notice website.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on that is done, right? Okay, so let's look at, we'll let John talk to us about ordinance 2022-05, 2022-06, 2022-07, 2022-08, 2022-09, 2022-10, and 2022-11.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The interest maybe of not dragging things out, I read through all of those. They're, they were just such insignificant little red lines and changes that everything looked, well, very appropriately adjusted. And that's all they are, are adjustments to clarify and take out language and things that normally apply. And rather than.
Carl, can I short-circuit you just? I, I hear where you're going and I, I appreciate what I think you're about to say.
Can I short-circuit that too?
Yeah.
Did we ever get Jay? I never did stand on my iPad.
You did not, and I do have some comments about that.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing what I was missing.
My, my suggestion would be if, if I could comment very briefly on each one or not comment, my suggestion is that we not waive the rules and pass them, but that you be prepared to, to just take a vote next week if, or at your next meeting if you have questions. I've done, I've been reviewing the code regarding your procedures and, and just recommend that, that waiving the rules be reserved for more emergency situations than routine matters. And can speak further on that at another time if you'd like.
Works for me.
Very good then.
Oh, do you, do you want any further comment on those, or do you want to?
Counsel?
Put them up for action at the next meeting.
Well, my red lines don't show up online.
Mine don't either.
The, this, this is, will be helpful then. I'll, I'll do the first one and then you tell me if you need more. The first, the format that we have been using in the attorney's office for these draft ordinances is that there are whereas clauses, as you know. And then the language under section one says, Cache County Code, section, in this instance, 2.12.200 of the Cache County Code is amended to read in full as follows, and then you get what the code will look like after you take this action.
John, can I just enter?
Yep.
I think if you go to page four.
That's what I was going to say. That what we've done is, our practice is to put what the code will look like in the body of the ordinance, and then at the end of the document, put the red line.
Okay, great.
In each instance. So if you scroll to the bottom, you'll get the red line.
Okay.
Barbara, you were going to say that quicker than, you did say that quicker than I was.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Got three hundred dollars an hour.
So, so that first one, we've noted that the code has, had the address of where you would be holding these meetings every two weeks at 120 North, 100 West. We thought we'd update it to show that you're meeting here. And that talks about being on the second and fourth Tuesday of each and every month. We noted that over the last number of years, there's an exception in December, that it's held on the first and second Tuesday of the month in December, so we've added that in rather than have it just fall under the exception language on subsection E. And that the, the invocation part of the council agenda was done away with a number of years ago for opening remarks instead. That's the other change to that one.
Okay.
The other sections are all really just updating references to the Utah code and don't need.
I was going to say, just correlate with code numbers and all that stuff.
Yep. The, the one that I'd comment briefly on is ordinance 2022-09. It talks about lawful fences. We're updating, these would update the references to state code, but if you read through that, those are requirements that might be outdated, and that's going to be on our list to, to just look substantively at, at whether the fencing requirements in the county ought to be updated.
On you out in Wellsville.
That concludes my presentation, and I'd recommend it be moved onto the, the agenda for your next meeting for action.
All right.
That works.
Thank you, John, that works. We will move all of these to our next meeting.
And that, that last ordinance, we just didn't quite get done. We'll get that in front of you next.
All right. Jay, is it on there yet? All right, very good. All right, moving on, we will go to 12. Special counsel meeting with Congressman Blake Moore. Remember that is on Thursday, this coming Thursday.
I haven't been able to be here because I can't drive fast enough to get back from UAC. So...
Okay.
I drive fast, but not that fast.
Okay, very good. And from 1 to 2, and Janine has already noticed that for us. So that's been noticed and we can all meet together on that. County Day on the Hill, Wednesday, February 23rd.
Register for that, don't you?
Yes, we do.
I'm not able to go that day.
Carl is not. I will be there.
I will be there.
Anybody else?
County Day over the hill? I'll be there.
I won't be able to be there either.
Nolan?
I don't think so. I would, I will try, but at this point, I have a conflict.
And for those of you that are going, keep your hand on your wallet. Say there's pickpockets or they request you to buy the lunch.
Just with the legislature, you never know.
All right, moving on. Item C, UAC Building Utah Conference. That's Wednesday through Friday, March 23rd through the 25th down in Carbon County. Again, do we need to register?
Yes, we do.
That, Janine? We need to register for that, or are you going to register? Or do you want us to do that personally?
It's up to you. I can register if you allow me to.
Okay.
You're going to go to Price, Utah?
When do you have to, when do we have to be registered? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I should ask you, Gina?
I think they like to at least do it two weeks before, so as soon as possible.
All right.
Gina, you're a girl.
Yeah.
And I will probably go, yes.
Party in Price.
Yeah. Dave, are you?
Right now, no.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nope.
Wednesdays never work for me.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, okay.
You wanted to go, Carl, I'll substitute.
Will ya?
I don't know how long time I can get an appointment.
All right. Then we have the management conference in April, 26th through 28th down in Ogden. And I will be going to that.
Me too.
I don't need to make reservations, but that's all right? I mean, since it's in Ogden?
I think you should still register for the conference, so don't we?
Right.
I'll let you know. I might, it just depends on how much I want to drive.
I'd like to drive it back because it's unfortunate.
So would I.
It's not that far.
I can probably go on Tuesday and on Thursday.
Okay.
Just drive both days.
Very good.
So Paul is going to that?
I'll go Tuesday and Thursday, but just drive.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's go to council member reports. Carl, we'll start with you.
Nothing. I think enough fireworks going on. Nothing else, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Carl. Gina?
Barbara, thank you for running a good meeting. I'll also say, if you guys haven't driven by the sheriff's office, there's walls up for the animal shelter and it's exciting. I know they've been working really hard on it. Like I told you last time, he's put together a group to come up with policies and hopefully some county-wide animal ordinances. So I've been attending that all through the process. And that's all.
Okay, yeah, I almost neglected to talk about this. Thank you. I picked it up. All right. 2021, or this will be 2022, Cache County Council and Executive's Boards and Committees Assignments. Is everyone satisfied with the boards they're serving on? Or do you want to make any adjustments on any of this? And I will say that I visited with Carl. He and I have made a couple changes. He is going to do, serve on the Cache County Community Foundation Board and take my place that way. And he is also graciously accepted to serve on the Public Relations Committee. And I will not serve on that, but he will serve on that. And then that way, and I appreciate his thoughtfulness on offering to help me out with some of those. So thank you, Carl.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any other input that they'd like to put in?
There is one thing.
Okay.
On the ordinance and policy review committee?
Yes.
We've got the deputy county executive on there. I think it would be better if he just attended. And then if he needed to vote or something, in the executive's absence, he could. Because we have a lot of executive-style people on there, and I just think it kind of makes it heavy.
Okay, I'm just, oh, here we are.
So I would move that we change that to attend.
To attend, under Executive Zook?
Under Deputy.
Deputy, okay, very good. Okay. Yes.
I note in our, in the attorney's offices review of figuring out who appoints and the origins of all of these, our best research from Lynn Lemon is that the ordinance and policy review committee was organized by the county executive and attorney that preceded him. As an executive committee that was to review ordinances for form and legality primarily. It's kind of morphed over the 30 or 40 years it's been there. But as it stands, I think it's an executive committee.
Okay, so...
Which would mean that David...
So Executive Zook would be, okay, all right.
Do we have some writing on that?
We haven't found anything in writing, so that's where we're trying to just get historical memory.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Because that really should be a council committee rather than executive. We can change, we can change it.
Or create its own. As it stands, if it's an executive committee...
Ordinance and policy, that is all county council.
Yeah.
The, I'm reporting the, our best information on how it was created and for what purpose. And the purpose of reviewing for form and legality of ordinances is really an attorney's office function, that's an executive-type function, which kind of goes to what I was talking about in the last meeting. But that committee really shouldn't be determining ordinances, you know, making decisions on, and they don't make decisions.
Just advice, right?
Advice, but doing the researching and discussioning. And that really ought to be this body or subsets of this body acting in committee and bringing in others to give information, more so than having a committee that isn't this body.
So we could change that though, because county code says the council can establish and define duties and functions of appointed boards and commissions deemed appropriate to expedite, facilitate the duties of the council or any office, department, or agency of the county.
Yeah, I think that you could create your own or work in concert with the executive because it's an ad hoc kind of committee. And if the executive would like to bring together some folks to give some input and advice, which is what an ad hoc committee is, there's not going to prohibit that. In terms of its history, it appears to have been created by an executive and an attorney.
Counsel? Opinion?
I'd say leave it as it stands right now, and if we want to at some point create or change something, we can, but there's no need to.
I will say I'm concerned about the way that it's, what we have is different, and I'm on that committee, than what it sounds like it was established for, because we get into discussions about what's going to work in ordinances to give that to the council. To me, it's a council committee, and I'm concerned about giving any council legislative authority over to the executive because it belongs at the council. So I would like to see it changed.
And I think that its function ought to be modified. And I raise it tonight just that you're making appointments. And if you're changing an appointment as it stands, I think that the executive ought to make that change in the appointment. And I'm certainly thinking that the function and form ought to change. But as it stands, I believe it's an executive-created committee, and so he ought to make the appointment.
Okay, so you're saying that maybe we should wait to approve this or just continue on?
I don't believe that your approval is needed.
Okay.
And an ad hoc executive committee, it's informational for you.
Okay.
In that form.
All right. Okay. Anything else that anyone wants to change or discuss on this? All right. If not, we're moving on with the, continuing with the council member reports. Paul, please.
I've said enough tonight.
Okay. Nolan?
I will say thank you to Barbara and Gina and Paul for bringing some things up. I was in the dark totally on that, so thank you. That helps. Which brings me to the point, I think in the last meeting, we discussed if there was a part of the council helping on the interviews for the deputy executive. Has that been happening?
Yes, I was on two interviews on Friday.
Okay, so...
I did it by phone because I was out of town, but I was included on those.
How close are we on that?
I think Amy said maybe another week out.
I think it's important when we have those type of things that we do have council representation on the interviews.
Yeah, and I was, yeah, I was glad to be included on that, and they went very well. The candidates that were viewed very qualified, I was pleased with both of them.
So did they circumvent back and let you interview the ones that had already taken place, or what?
No, no.
Okay, well, thanks for you guys' involvement on that. I appreciate that. Paul, I appreciate your passion, and thank you for helping us understand that. Because I agree, if it's money or budget or anything else, that should really come through here. And when I looked at that, I was like, a million bucks could flip. We could do a lot of stuff with that million bucks. I mean, for 220 homeless, how long could we put them away for a million bucks for housing?
And if you see their escalation cost, it's only 10%. How much did the animal shelter escalate? I mean, that was going to be...
True point.
I'd say I think that million bucks...
Plus the $53,000 that's gone away from there, that's a huge point. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nolan.
Gordy?
I had the same, I had the same observation that, man, I don't remember anything about this. And so I think you did very, very well of helping us understand and reinforcing that it comes to the council. And I thank you for taking that, and it's not a pleasant thing to have to do, those kind of things. The other thought I had on it when I got looking at what they were doing that, I kind of thought like Dave did, this sounds like California, where we're going to have one building and come in and get all you can haul off, you know? It's kind of what I was thinking, being a little harsh. But other than that, I appreciate your ability. Barbara was taking chair, and you're doing well.
Thank you. Thanks. Dave?
You know, all the, it's amazing how much you learn as, when you go down there and you rub shoulders with a lot of the other county councils and commissioners there at the hill down there, and what they talk about and what they talk to you about, just individually. And they say, well, I've heard about this, and I've heard about this, and there's some of those things that affect our county. But you go, are you, why haven't we heard about that? You know, there's things like that that raises the questions, and then you go question other people. And that's how we get this information, that we should have been known upfront on several things. But it's, you know, it's, there's more of those scenes that are happening. But it's good just to rub shoulders with people down there that are talking to each other and asking questions. It's just good to be down there at different times.
Very good.
We know what we're, we know what our business is here.
Good. Thank you, Dave. Yes, I appreciated the discussion tonight because I learned a lot also. I also realized that I have a lot to learn and that I appreciate your patience with me. And I'll trudge on, but thank you for your support with everything. Part of my report, I had a really great meeting with Chris today, Chris Harrell. And I would like to move on, and he would like to move on with setting a meeting to meet with the planning and zoning committee. And as soon as we can get that set up. We also talked about, and I want you guys to give me thoughts or think about, maybe more than once a year of meeting, and Nolan?
We talked at least two or something.
Yeah, Nolan, I would really like your input on that because there are so many things going on as Chris brought out, growth in the valley, different ordinances and different things that I think that once, once a year is just not enough. So I don't know, we're looking maybe at quarterly or if you think twice a year. But you know, if you'd give us your thoughts on that, I would appreciate that. Or let me know if you want to think about it.
Well, I'd like to entertain some idea about conditional use permits. I mean, the planning and zoning set here, every time a conditional use permit comes up, the poor P and Z takes a battering because we open it to the public, but yet we can't give much public input to it.
Right.
And then I've got emails, I think every one of you have got emails over the past one. So I'd like some talk about that. I don't know what we can do about it, but I'd like some thinking about it so that... And I know I've talked with Chris about it and I've done there, but it's a point of contention.
It is, very much so.
It's a point of contention, so...
And he and I talked about on these meetings, not just having kind of like a general area to talk about, but big talk.
Point of points.
Spent that whole time talking about conditional permits or whatever it is that there's a concern about.
I think one of the big issues is we got to drill down on water. I mean, we sat down and listened to an RU5 going out in Clarkson. And I talked to John about this before. When I sat on the P and Z, we were basically said, you can't talk about water. I think we got to start talking about water.
Okay.
Because we passed a 13 subdivision, 13 thing, and we don't even talk about how close that is or anything else. So I see CUPs, I see water, I see all of those things coming to a point. And I know that the development office is doing work and everything else, but we've really got to reach out to get somebody to these cities to answer us because a lot of these subdivisions and developments are taking right around their borders. And we've been accused of listening to some cities and not to some cities. And so there are some things there that I think it would help if we discussed that and met with the P and Z at least twice, but as we, and probably four times as we get down on this master plan, because that really affects the P and Z as we drill down on that master plan.
You know, Nolan, the P and Z is a quasi-judicial body. They can only act on existing laws and ordinances. So for them to be able to approve or deny based on water, we have to have an ordinance in place that allows them to do so. And that's what we don't have. And so as a county, as a council, that's something that we probably need to start looking at is that concern and putting some kind of an ordinance in place because P and Z can't just decide on their own that they're going to deny something for water because it's not, it's not their purview to go outside of what's legally permissible now.
John, do you have any input on that?
I saw him flinch, so I'm sure he does.
Yeah, because, you know, I've talked about this before, so...
Carl's right that when it comes to things like CUPs where the requirements are set by code, that we don't have anything in county ordinance that would allow them to make a decision based on water. When it comes to making recommendations on zoning, that is where they can take that into consideration because they're going to make a recommendation to you about changing zoning
zoning, and you can make your zoning decisions, and they can make their recommendations on zoning decisions on any basis that a reasonable person might think about. And so if you're going to rezone from A-ten to RU five, you may want to consider what's the availability of water if you're going to allow that much more density. And so in those instances, it's perfectly appropriate for them to take that into consideration because they're not setting requirements, they're making a recommendation to you about rezoning, so.
I mean, this discussion needs to be had with P and Z, plus, like you said, CUP, but I think we can drill down and look at, if CUP is allowed in A-ten, what, or do we put CUPs in different zones, or can we compare that?
You're, I'll, this really ought to be.
Chris is coming forward here.
It's a discussion item on your agenda.
Okay, it's just points, so we have another discussion.
There's a part that we can say about it.
I was just going to say what John just said, that this is a great topic to discuss with the commission. Those are all very good points we need to talk through, and we've talked through those, we're very interested in those same topics as staff, and I think the commission would be very interested and would engage with you very well with those topics.
Very good. Thank you, Chris.
Now, isn't it, John, you might correct me, but I don't think the council has any say in water. That's all state decided, isn't it?
So we don't get, the the county and the council don't have any say on who gets water or how much or where to put it, but when you make decisions about zoning, should we allow a whole bunch of, you know, allow more density of residential units, you're welcome to talk about water. What's the water availability, that if we're going to go from A-ten to RU two, is there water to support that? You're not putting any requirements on anybody at that, by talking about that, but it's certainly something to think about.
I mean, in the time, in the times past, we've had these situations where people on the council don't think there's any water there, but as far as saying we deny you a building permit or we deny you a subdivision because we don't think you got water, has nothing to do with us, because.
You're exactly right.
The state will decide if you get any water or not. And I mean, we've had people build homes and start drilling a well, and they get all through, there's no water.
I just repeat that this ought to get noticed on an agenda.
Right, yeah.
And have a good discussion about all these issues.
We'll put this on the agenda, and Nolan, if I could keep in close contact with you, I would like you to, you know, select topics, and we can work with Chris together and set meetings with the P and Z planning and zoning and.
We want you to be able to tell those people which ones will get water when they drill a well, and which ones won't.
Okay. Very good, thank you, and the only other thing? Yes, Dave.
Eleven A?
Eleven A?
Can we still act on that and and get that and be done with that, or do we still want to wait for?
Oh, yes.
She's not here, but.
She's not here.
That's just a report, isn't it?
Yes.
I think that's all the stuff that we did over the course of the year, right?
Yeah, it's over the course of the year.
All forty-seven pages thoroughly.
Actually, I felt, I spent quite a bit of time going through that, and I called and talked to Diana, asked her a few questions, and so I can clarify what it, who it was. I mean, it is what it is, and I didn't see any issues or problems with it.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval for eleven A?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-one tax relief report.
No, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the twenty twenty-one tax relief report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for myself, any opposed?
I abstain because I didn't finish reading it.
Okay, very good, thank you, Dave, I appreciate you bringing that up, I appreciate that. All right, then, if there's no, no more comments, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.